Everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the hybrid planning board. October 24th. Call to order.
Here.
Luisio. Bowen.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Olney here and Ms. Tenny.
Yeah.
Now, Kwam tonight, like to remind everyone and guests to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak. The board reported. First item on the agenda is acknowledged receipt of correspondence. The board received three separate emails from Jim Socky, 10, 12, 14, and 15.
Well, meeting hiatus.
Need to check to make sure they can hear us. I was lucky. I think someone unmuted and just stated that you can hear us.
Yes, we can hear you.
At this time, I allow public comments on items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, moving on, we have a cell signaling project update from Peter Gudrow. Peter, welcome and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Peter Gudrow of, I'm a Hamilton resident. I've been helping cell signaling with the acquisition and now and the beginning of the permitting process. And we wanted to, it's, it had been, it's been probably six months before we were before the board or since we were before the board and wanted to come and offer just a very brief update as to where things stand on our end. And then equally importantly, just to make sure that the board knows that there's a, you know, an open line of communication. Should you have questions or concerns over the, you know, incoming months? I have with me this evening Mark Glofski and I see Craig Thompson as well. So there may be a couple of other members from the cell signaling team, but they're also with me this evening. So just very quickly, I'll, I'll run through a couple of updates. As you may know, or as you probably do know, we acquired the site in July, this past July. There were a total of four parcels that we purchased, a total of approximately 50 acres. The purchase did include the health club. For, for obviously reasons, we didn't, we didn't.
I think it's.
For obviously reasons, we didn't publicize that, but we, we, we did end up acquiring that as well. The, we have installed a new operator in the health club. We're very excited that Jessica and Josh Pletka and a number of members of the former MAC management team have taken over the operation of the club and we think it's going to be a great fit and we wish them very well. So we're excited that that's going to remain a fixture in the community. Over the last several months, cell signaling has been working very hard to select a design team. They went through a very rigorous evaluation process. They ultimately selected a, an architect by the name of HGA. They're a national, they're, they're a global firm, tremendous amount of experience with lab work. They've also brought on other engineers, including BR plus A Hancock Associates, who I think you know, and a landscape architect by, by the name of Michael Van Valkenburgh Associates. So we're, that, that process ended in September and so that team is beginning to work on a master planning process, which we hope will, which will continue through the fall and, and probably, probably towards the end of the year, will have a better sense of what we think the master plan for the site will look like. The the scope of the project is similar to what we discussed last time, when, when we last spoke. The phase one, we think will be in the neighborhood of 120 or 125,000 square feet of lab and lab support space. We believe, currently, we believe that we will do all surface parking to support that. We think that the garage will go into phase two. We do see this as being, as, as having the potential for further development. We see another, the potential for another 200 or 300,000 square feet, whether or not cell signaling will, will expand to that extent. In the next five, 10, 20 years is to be seen, but certainly the site can accommodate it. In terms of utilities, we've been in discussion with your DPW regarding connection to your water and sewer. And we, as you may recall, we had some concerns regarding electric capacity to the site. We seem to have solved that, at least for phase one. We've been assured that there's adequate electric capacity for, for our phase one. We have some work in front of us to ensure that not only this site, but KPN in general have adequate electric capacity to support economic development going forward, but we're, we're comfortable that we have what we need for phase one. Sustainable design remains a high priority for cell signaling, a highly efficient building envelope, maximizing electrification, geothermal, heat pumps and so forth are all part of the current plan. We'll be restoring portions of the site. Those of you who are familiar with it know that a good portion of it is pretty well scarred, but there'll be large portions of it that are restored as part of this process. And obviously, all of our engineering will improve the stormwater runoff because currently there is, there is no, there is no treatment or filtration. In terms of the permitting process in front of the board, as I mentioned, we're going through this master planning process. We would hope to be before you in the first quarter of next year with a special permit application, special permit and site plan review application. That'll obviously depend on, on how the master planning process goes, but that's our current plan. We'll also be engaging with other boards, the select board, the board of health and the CONCOM. Will all be on our agenda. So, and if we're, so if we're successful getting to you in the first quarter, we would hope to be able to, you know, work through your process in a reasonable amount of time for the possible groundbreaking at the end of somewhere towards the end of 2023. We see an 18-month construction process once we do break ground and with an occupancy in 2025. So that's, that's just an overview. As I say, this is as much, this is both an update as well as an opportunity to just ensure that we do have an open line of communication. So I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Peter. I'll go around the board with any questions. Anyone want to have a question for him? Laura?
I have a question. Laura, Tenny, thanks for the update. I'm interested in the timeline you're thinking about from reviewing the master plan level to, I think you said quarter, first quarter 2023, and then breaking ground at the end of 2023. That seems pretty accelerated to go from master plan to detailed design to construction mobilization by the end of the year. I wondered if you could just speak to that, to the extent you know more about that schedule.
Sure. And, and Laura, it is, it is certainly aggressive, but, but cell signaling's, you know, needs are are aggressive as well. So we're, we're trying to, we're going to push it as hard as we can. I think that we will, we will have, our engineers believe that they can have what we need to file for a special permit sometime in the first quarter. But obviously that depends on how far we, you know, how far when we make a decision as to what the proper master plan is for the site this fall. So if it's December 31st, you're right. If we can work, work through some of that earlier in November, then we've got more time.
Thank you.
I assume you're, are you planning to do like a preliminary before submitting to do sort of an overview of the project with the planning board first?
I don't think we've, I don't think we've made a firm decision as to whether or not, I think there's, we haven't made a firm decision as to whether to commit on a preliminary basis or not. If you have advice in that front, we're, we're all ears.
Just that it might streamline your whole process. I don't know that it will, but it might.
Sarah?
As you may be aware, we are proposing revised special permit regulations at this town meeting. And so you might want to take a look at them. They're on the website. They are more performance based. So to Gary's point, might be good to sit down and think about what our goals are on it, so that we can achieve them collaboratively. Because we do have, we were, we are hoping to move to performance based review.
And thank you. We, we, we actually spent some time last week going through those and, and, and want to understand what the differences are between the two, between the current bylaws and the, and the proposed, but thank you for that.
Mary Christina, Chris, any questions?
Um, I guess maybe at least you should maybe be kept in the loop as far as conversations with DPW. So it's not a shock when that information is brought to the planning board. So whatever those conversations are, maybe you should be kept in the loop as the chair. That's my number one. And then number two, I've just read a few things about geothermal and aquifers lately. So could you just forward any information so that we can become educated? It's so sensitive area with our water supply and that was specifically a few articles that I read. So just so we're on the same page when that time comes.
Sure. We'd be happy to gather some information for you. We've got a couple of consultants that have tremendous amount of experience in that. So happy to do that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Well, we look forward to your project, seeing what you got.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, at last meeting, we talked about Sue Brown leading us as planner. And then we talked a little bit about having a high level discussion with, you know, what we might be looking, ideas and criteria, job description for a search for a new planner.
Do we know why there's an echo? Did we try and fix this yet?
No.
Can you mute iPhone too?
I'll mute as much as I can. Is that better?
No.
Okay, is that better? Yeah. So to that extent, I think so we, the town has sent us their consultant.
Actually, send again, it's probably worse.
That went here, joining us. And I think before we discuss, Susan, do you have any opening comments?
Yeah. So just to clarify my role and why I'm here. I'm assisting Greg in framing up the search for the new town planner. So the goal is to understand from the planning board specifically, the criteria, the skills, the things that you're looking for, getting very clear with benchmarking, the different job descriptions that are out there currently today. I'm going to work with the HR folks to do that here. And to look at the goals and responsibilities specifically for what a new town planner would look like. The goal is to come back with a profile with all that information so that when the search does begin and the recruiting begins, there's a solid understanding of exactly what you're looking for, what the responsibilities are, the job description and so forth. So my hope is to listen in tonight for sure, but to maybe get 15 minutes. I know everybody's very busy. But over the course of the next week or so, 15 minutes with each of you individually, just to run through what you believe the most important characteristics, skill sets, kind of top three priorities you'd like to see this planner have and do so that I can compile that into something that I can then turn back to the program. So that's what it is in a nutshell.
So I thought maybe that we had in our last meeting or two meetings ago, talked about having that conversation as a group, like maybe being prepared and doing that as a planning board.
So tonight, let's have that discussion. And Sue's here to listen and we'll follow from there. Let's see, Greg, do you have any comments?
Oh, hi, Ron. Thank you. Yeah, just to elaborate a little bit, you know, the, the selectmen have, the select board have embarked on a, on a review of governance and, and how they can improve upon that. And so Susan's been brought on and this with, with Sue Brown's departure, this was a logical extension of some of her efforts to help out the, the select board. And take a look at their functioning and how we function as a, as a town, at different departments and how we can be supportive to our various, various boards and committees. As you know, we have quite a few. And so this, this effort can feed into that. So look forward to, to listening and hearing what you folks think make the most sense as we, as we move forward. Certainly no lack of, lack of topics and, and issues to address.
Thanks, Greg. Would anybody want to start the discussion up? I have criteria, job description.
Just stop again. This is really distracting for me. It stopped when Greg spoke. So is it possible it's Greg?
What if you have your bikes on?
I don't, I'm not.
I'll mute Greg.
I'm not on. I'll just have the documents.
Do you have the whole check out?
Happened with Greg with Phoenix. I was just curious if that had anything to do with him.
Typically echoing is a function of people in the meeting room having.
Gary, do you have your speaker on? You joined without audio.
The only thing I commute is this coverage. And I don't think I want to do that. Can I mute myself?
Yes, you should mute. Everything should be muted.
Don't allow me to mute it.
Well, she's been picking up from the. So he doesn't have it.
I don't know. I think we'll just go on with the echo, sorry, some technical difficulties.
Greg can unmute again and see if it does anything more. I did notice that.
So is every, are you muted?
It has to be more than muted. It has to be, you can't join with the computer audio. But he's not on it because you can't, you can't mute himself.
Yeah. So the only people I commute is 1623 coverage. Want me to try that?
Try it.
Now you don't hear anything. Ron, this is Becky, if I may. Who's, who's, do you have Tyler or Joan from 1623 helping out today?
There is someone here. I don't know if it's Tyler or Joe.
They can go around to each person's computer to make sure that whomever is on Zoom is actually appropriately muted. Cause that happened to me last time.
We're not on.
Nobody else in there is on Zoom.
Because his computer is on out in the lobby. Maybe it's picking up. Can you just go out now?
Well, what about if there's somebody? If there's somebody, if Susan or whomever else is sitting there is on Zoom?
No, we're not on Zoom.
Okay.
Becky, do you hear an echo?
Uh, not really.
Okay.
Try to move forward as best we can on the town planner. Any ideas for what we might be looking for? And I'll start with Sarah.
Um, well, since the only town planner that I know in this context is, is Sue Brown, I think it would be the strategy that Susan proposed makes a lot of sense where she gathers information from us all individually about what we want to see, but then goes out and looks at what other towns have for job descriptions, how it works. So I feel like I could be educated. It would be nice to get that broad perspective from using other towns perspective. So so I don't have, of course I have ideas, but I'm, I'm not ready to share them yet. I would benefit from a broader look.
Laura?
Seeing examples of other municipal finer descriptions would definitely help. I think there are some basic credentials that determine that the person's or you know, define show person's credentials. So AICP is a planner designation. There are others could be someone with AI architecture or ASLA landscape architecture, but it shouldn't be someone who is professionally credentialed and licensed, that applies. And with appropriate, you know, some years of background of doing planning at municipal or institutional scale as a starting point. Multi-family housing, resiliency. I mean, some of the things that we're going to be looking at. Updating zoning, you know, any of those things that we've been sort of grappling with or are preparing to grappling, grappling with relevant experience in those topics would be useful.
Thank you. Chris?
So I think one of the big problems that Sue Brown had was a confusion about her role, who she was reporting to. And I think for us on the planning board, since she's the planner, we assumed that she worked for us, but in fact, she worked for Greg and I think that caused a lot of unnecessary tension. Since it wasn't clear to everybody exactly who she was working for, who she reported to. So I think that should be straightened out before we get into hiring anybody is to make sure that the town is clear about what the role of the planner is here and what boards can use those services and how those services get shared. Another problem I've noticed with the town is that boards do tend to operate in silos. And I think the thing that the planner could do is try to break that down a little bit. And so if the planner would serve the zoning board of appeals and the conservation commission and the affordable housing trust and even the housing authority, that could make coordination much easier. And I think that's a role that a planner could play in a town like this.
For myself, I've been looking for someone who knows process pretty well and can brief the board on the current bylaws that we're, that are up at the particular meeting. Give us an overview of, you know, what the criteria are, which bylaws apply. Also regarding sharing a planner. I don't know if it's a full-time job or not, but like we all share town council, all the towns around here, would it be possible? Is it to share a town planner with Hamilton? I don't know if that's even possible. I throw that out there. To help supplement her salary or his, or his salary. Some thoughts that I had. Mary?
Um, I think there's been a few good things said. I, I see the role as part-time. I don't think Manchester needs a full-time town planner. I like the idea of regionalizing a town planner with another town. The cross-function across boards so that we would get knowledge of what ZDA is doing, what the affordable housing trust is doing. Get reports from them. We used to get what the from the ZDA, what, what their final decisions were. So then when that application came in front of the planning board, that was very helpful. That would be good. Somebody that could put reports together, do research and do reports for the board, somebody with strong project management skills, economic development skills. And just to Laura's point, yeah, somebody that's a certified planner. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm just going to piggyback on all of those. I think most of those are great ideas. I like the regionalization. I like the part-time idea. I believe in the past, in my opinion, we relied too much on MAPC. And I think that maybe the other half of the salary could be used to find consultants that that is their niche and their expertise to supplement what the town's goals or the master plan is looking forward to addressing at that. Us as a board have not had a retreat in two years. So we haven't set, we've been pretty busy with the recodification, but hopefully after the recodification in November, we can start to address some other issues and maybe consultants funds could be used for specific consultants instead of a salary per se, because I think it's going to be very difficult to find someone that checks all those boxes. So we need to come up with the top, maybe one or two, three priorities in a person and then maybe rely on some experts or consultants for the rest. I think project management is a very important one.
Gary, did you want to speak to Chloe now?
Well, I think if you add all, all this up, it's all been mentioned. It's pretty clear to me. We need a full-time planner. 15 years ago, I, I, I talked with Essex about us sharing a planner a long time ago. Somewhere around 12 or 15 years ago, and they were up for it, but I think they've got a planner on board now. And since she's been here, I think it's crystal clear, we do need full-time. And I think from what I see, what she was used for, I don't think anybody could have predicted how much time it was going to take. I think Greg, I think anyhow Greg was directing her to seek certain grants and then to follow through with the boards that were involved in those grants. Once they were found, that chewed up a lot of time. It would have been great if she could help us more, like you're saying, briefing us with submissions we've got and advise us as to which directions are most timely, efficient way to go in handling some submissions. It might make our process go quicker, our meetings be shorter. If you also ask her to research subjects, which would be great. I think she just ended up with a lot of work to do and it was kind of hard to know ahead of time that we were going to spend so much time and effort on the bylaws, for example, as well as the whole variety of grants she touched base with while she was here. And I think it should, it seems clear to me that the reason we use MAPC is because it's a lot cheaper to get. And I think it should, it seems clear to me that the reason we use M A P C is because it's a lot cheaper to get professional consultants and professional, I think this, as far as I understand, they're, they're set up to help towns as a cheaper way of getting different studies done, different planning work done. If you hire independent consultants, I think it's going to cost you a lot of money, but Greg will know the truth behind all this, but that's what I see. And I'd love if we could just send, send you in writing, Susan, maybe any follow-up comments. It might be easier.
Sarah.
I'm not going to echo everybody's comments, but I would add, nobody's mentioned that they should have experience with a town. Prefer a Massachusetts town would be ideal as opposed to a city council. It's very different. And I think someone needs to have demonstrated experience in getting things beyond a study. Implementation. And we can work together to build back and forth. Where the planner understands that, that there are lots of opinions and the board understands that the planner has expertise, but the planner's not going to be the definitive word in this town, I think. But I think somebody who's flexible and doesn't necessarily have preconceived notions, but can get things from study into implementation that has worked in a town.
Thank you.
I'll just add one last thing. I've been following Hamilton. Tobacco. The, the, you're helping development off of Tobacco Road. And in that, I've watched the town planner presenting. He's the person who, if there's an application, he starts the project, he introduces it and he explains to the planning board, he has materials gathered beforehand. So just as a point of different way that a different town does things, maybe just be fine. I think it's helpful, the way that Hamilton runs it.
Very good.
In response to Sarah. If you think there's a lot of relevancy in having someone work for a town, I wouldn't rule out people who have come from city administration because there tend to be more professional staff on a city administration and more complex problems of the, and even though we're a small town and trying to stay a small town, there are still a number of complex problems. And if someone's had exposure to those and been in a town that has taken measures to, you know, regulate them or, or whatever other, or do you design standards or, you know, there might be some specific tools that someone can bring and has experience with that could be very useful to us. And having exposure to those, I think is relevant.
Yeah, and I think the big gap happened. Colleen used to actually gather our materials, do the checklist things, and there was some kind of miscommunication, rules that changed, but whatever that happened, there seemed to be a big disconnect. So.
The town planner needs to work closely with our admin.
But not me in the matter. It is a technical.
Any closing, any comments?
No, these are great. And I would just say that to Gary's point, if you have anything additional and want to just tell me, that's great. And I'll start compiling and working through this. And we'll share as we go along. So you're up to date on whatever refined in terms of job descriptions and things like that. So it's great.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Greg, anything else to add or? Well said.
Nevermind, I'm all set. It's very helpful comments and I look forward to additional feedback. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, before we get into recodification, I have an offer. Need to do a site visit on the Rock and Boat Garden, Manchester Marine and Parks and Rec for the public hearing on November ninth. So Brian Pike has offered us a boat ride. Visit the site. And my suggestion to the board and and I don't know if this works with everyone, although Thursday, and it will be enough time for us to get a note out at three P M. Supposed to be about seventy degrees and sunny. Nice day. We can park at Manchester Marine and then go out and hear the proposed slips. And then I would suggest that four o'clock, when we get back, to go to the one fifty-four Pine where the D P W has agreed to meet with us on their sidewalk, although they have an open house at five, so they're hoping we can do it in a half hour, which I think we can. So that's my proposal. If that date works with you, that would be Thursday at three P M at Manchester Marine. And if that doesn't work. We can do some other, some other day and time and probably I don't think we can do a boat ride, you know. I think four or five because of the darkness, but.
So Thursday at three, Manchester Marine, and what, could you just?
Yeah, boat ride.
Next time, and come back and?
Come back and go to Pine Street for the sidewalk at the proposed parking field for the Parks and Recs. Rockers on Manchester.
You can see them. I mean, we meet at Manchester Marina at the?
I'm thinking Manchester Marine because it'll be easier, less, less boat ride. Becky, have your hand up, sat on this?
It is. I, I just, thank you, Ron. And Becky Jakes, this is select board. Want, how many spots are on the boat?
So I asked Brian about that and he said he can accommodate anyone who comes. That's what he said. So I don't know if that means additional boat rides or what, but he said he could accommodate the public.
That's okay, good. So four o'clock, Manchester Marine. Reed's Park, Reed Park. Thank you.
Manchester Marine, three o'clock. And I'll, I'll, I'll firm that we can get parking there. Otherwise, we, I might change the to Reed's Park, but I think Manchester Marine has plenty of parking and would accommodate us.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's good with the board.
So I'm, I'm attentive that day. I'm already planning to be in Cambridge, so I may or may not be able to get back at that hour. This is when the work can go and the weather is right. I'll try, but even if I say now that I can make it, it's all dependent on traffic and.
Let us know. Okay, I'll have Gail, since Gail rock and roll with the notice. All right, that's all I had. And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Sarah Creighton on a special town meeting.
I think everybody knows, but select board voted last week, whatever day it was, Wednesday, Thursday, to recommend all our articles to the town meetings. So that's good. And the, thank you to Debbie Powers for doing the final edits. Our articles will start with number four. So every article you have is plus one, plus three. We'll get everybody a final copy when this is, we have. So she's printed them off and copies have been made, a hard copy. Everybody would like one. So they start with article four and go.
Can we get that on SharePoint? Because there were edits made that night.
Yeah, I'll have them. Yep, I'll have. Yep, the final versions. What I'll probably do is archive. Unfortunately, it's SharePoint. One of the things aside you can't do is rename folders. It messes up any links to those folders. But yes, I'll put them in SharePoint. As PDFs. So I think that's the only update there. Then we have, if you work backwards from November fourteenth, there are three cricket dates. But we don't have, this is our last meeting before any of those cricket deadlines. So that's why we Chris had proposed one cricket article, I think number four, and I wrote number five as just a final summary and put them on SharePoint for us to consider tonight. And then the other week, did you find out if, we talked about having the table? And Erica, I guess, said she was trying to put the table in the.
I think it's, I think they're able to make it fit perfectly into the
Whatever format.
So.
Has the table been updated with those?
We voted it already. So the two items that I'd like to talk about tonight are the two cricket articles, four and five, the wanted to just pull up number four, which is, Chris, you can explain because that was, you drafted that as a.
I tried to make it as factual and emotional as possible. The purpose of the article is to inform voters the difference between by right and variances and special permits. And so I just wanted to explain each of those terms because there's some, often some confusion as to what they mean. So that's all I did.
So I know Mary for comments. Yep. Do you want me to share it? Can you share it?
Can you put it on the screens?
So it'd be, I think we're sharing here says.
It's cricket article four, should be in our.
So I asked that we go with the original because somebody was making edits today. I pulled the article off yesterday. We can't do edits last day.
So I. This is what I pulled off our site, so.
Okay, I can pull up. I have the original that doesn't have any edits, if we want to start with that.
I thought I did them yesterday.
So I, and I.
I'm just going to stop sharing.
It's an open meeting law violation to do that, so.
All right, well, we'll start, we'll start with them.
Very. It's an open law violation to.
You're debating.
To make comments that is giving your opinion on things, yes.
We can start with the. Let me share.
Becky, go ahead. Sorry.
Hi, sorry about that. I just want to clarify that if there is deliberation, that's an open meeting law violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Can I ask Becky a question?
Gary has a question for Becky.
So can you put a document in a SharePoint folder and then different members of the board can just add comments to it?
Gary, I would defer to Greg.
We've been doing that via Sue and Sue's, we've been sending things to the town planner for comments for incorporation. We can do that with Gail.
Well, let's, we don't have any confusion. Why don't we just work from the original? And I think so I can, can we move that window? Is that possible? Sorry. Okay.
I'm clicking on the upper right tile in the above room by monitor. That most upper right icon.
Because I don't see that online. You can get to do it on the. There we go. All right, who wants to?
So I would suggest that with the by right, that we add what we're changing to by right. So I would add in the accessory dwelling units and the non-conforming.
Is there a section here? Shouldn't it go in the down to the proposed zoning changes section?
Well, I think this is what, well. I guess wherever you feel is right to put it, but there's a reason we're defining what by right is, what variance and special permit, I would assume. And so then we're going to say what we're proposing in the new bylaws that fit into these categories, correct?
Agreed. What if we added?
Can I suggest on Mary's comment that we we note the section, but then refer to the table. So we're not stating things twice where there could be an error. The religion are pretty detailed. So if we say the ones that are going by right are, you know, whatever category you want to say A D U or something, and then you point to, it's going to go in association with the table.
But they're not in the table yet. It's not voted in yet.
But it's the proposed table, right? I mean.
Yeah, they're only, I don't think, I think that's too confusing because the proposed table has no changes in it's now article four.
Right.
Section one, two, three, four have no changes from the current bylaw. So then, so we are proposing up to twenty accessory dwelling units by right, small, under nine hundred square foot by right. So that's true.
The non-conforming uses, it's a little more complicated.
A little more complicated. So. But it would probably go.
Break out the non-conforming, increasing by a hundred percent to building that is non-conforming.
The problem is the existing bylaw technically allows that's, what we're doing is clarify the law. What the law currently says is if a building is non-conforming, you have to get a special permit. And then it says very clearly, a one and two family house is exempt. Now, it doesn't say what parts of that is exempt, it just says it's exempt. So one way of interpreting that is to mean that a one and two family house doesn't have to conform to anything. There is done, you can make a change to a one and two family by right automatically. But that's too vague also. That's why the proposed zoning language spells out the rules as to when or when not, you can do things by right.
So can I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not clear what you're saying with that, but we're going from needing a special permit for increasing a non, non-conforming to wanting to do a by right to increase it up to a hundred percent. So that's what we need to put in the by right section.
Okay, then, then we have to be very clear as to when you can and when you can't do that.
Correct.
Okay, so let's just do one thing at a time. So I suggest, oops, what? I'm not sharing anymore. There we go. The, so I'm adding a sentence. The proposed zoning change changes, the small, under nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling units by right. By right.
Up to twenty.
With regular, with new regulations.
Right.
Um, will allow. Up to twenty. What?
Annually up to twenty.
Will allow. Okay. The proposed zoning changes will allow annually up to 20 new small under nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling units by right. But judge.
What do you mean with, with new regulations?
Well, all the regulations of the building permit oversight and owner occupied certification.
That could be confused. I think that with new regulations clause can be confused with proposed regulations. So. You should say.
Should we want to say one.
Regulated.
Attached. Do we want to say all?
In existing, um. If they meet. Criteria. Including. Owner occupied, uh, existing. Building.
That is, I, I don't think it's a good idea. I think you were here originally going to describe the concept. What by right is, what a variance is, what a special permit is, in a sort of a neutral fashion. Then you got into proposed zoning changes to give a little snapshot. I think we're just heading into an hour and a half long conversation. If we start trying to say, well, which parts of our new proposed zoning bylaws, uh, would be considered by right? Would be considered, uh, needing a variance would be considered needing special permit. This is going to be a hard thing to craft right here. Why not stick to the generic terms that he tried to define to begin with?
Well, the, the proposed article does have a section on the proposed, um, zoning changes. So I agree with Mary that. We're remiss to not include.
We'll put it in that section then and don't, don't.
That's where.
Recraft every single paragraph.
Why? You can't see this. Why? Was my, there we go. Um, it's going right here. She's writing it. Including.
Don't go on to create details.
Um, leased.
Attached.
You need to go.
Within existing home.
Just mention it. Just the whole rest of our work covers.
Gets into the weeds.
What are we saying? And we, with meat criteria such as.
Where have I?
Criteria in section.
Yeah, exactly.
From the back of the section that they want to.
I think the spring meeting was postponed partly because of outreach. And so if this is our outreach, I think we need. To do a little description, not just generic.
It's not going to be a little descriptions.
Well, I think we need to specify what's going on in the appropriate sections. I do think we need to, um, be better at communicating. I, I get emails from, um. Residents and neighbors and, and there's a big misconception out there that these zoning bylaws are targeting affordable housing. People think this, these changes are to generate more affordable housing and they're not. So I think we have to be clear on that and we have to be clear on what we're proposing. So I.
That sounds like another article. Maybe a good one, but.
I think it's going to, and I'm happy to write it. It's, it's very important because I think a lot of people, um. Really don't know what's being proposed. And so. You know, it should have been, or maybe it still can be, we take them one by one instead of trying to do it all in one. I don't know.
Come to this dropping.
So I think we're trying to talk about this article, um, that we're trying to talk, focus on this article cricket number four. And when you do the math out, we really, if we want to have two more articles in the cricket, we have, we should discuss them tonight as painful and challenging as that is. So we don't.
We have the wordsmith that everything to the final.
Where we can have a, or we can post, um.
What you need to do it.
That's what we just sort of how we've been operating. But I think that what we've got here for the ADUs are, um. If I would add a second sentence, I need to wordsmith it slightly, but, um, uh. Accessory dwelling units that don't meet those criteria are subject to special permit. Right?
But you want to point them to the. Section where it's further explained.
Yeah, we haven't done that on any of the other changes. So, um. So we could say our C article. Those who does do not meet those criteria. Would. Would be subject to. To the special permit. Yeah. I think that is fine. That it adds a little bit of detail. It's, it's consistent with the law fits there.
Does that mean?
What?
Double click on that, Sarah. The bitch making it bigger.
Have to run the screen.
I can't hear what he's saying. So you need to double click on this.
Double click on the border.
I can't do that.
We have.
There you go.
So the proposed zoning changes will allow annually up to 20 new small accessory dwelling units by right. If they meet criteria such as. Uh, located within. Which is located within an existing home owner occupied and leased.
What does an lease mean? That comments on the.
Uh, it, it, it's not a border. It has to have, um.
That's confusing.
And. You have to, uh, lease. That's what the law will say. Uh, subject to a lease, something.
Located within an existing owner occupied home and leased for a period of minimum of six months. I mean, again, I think we're getting into stating what's in the regulation.
Way too much detail.
So.
Well, it's, this is a proposal from Mary. So before we.
Well, to be clear, I mean, I'm fine with listing out that. That we're proposing an ADU by law that's by right. I'm just trying to clarify. You know, we're all, there's only four major things that we need to clarify. The ADUs, the nonconforming, the senior housing and the RCC. So I'm fine with either the first page or in the proposed zoning changes that we list out. What's by right and what's by special permit that we're proposing. I don't think we're proposing anything for a variant. So I'm not a hundred percent clear why we're defining that.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, you've got one paragraph about ADUs. Let's follow Mary's thread and try to do three short.
See where we are and then.
Where we are.
I think, um, the variant, the, um. Nonconforming use is a little bit, as Chris said, more difficult because it's less clear.
Actually, maybe we could do it in a paragraph. I think we could do it.
Yeah, okay.
We're just saying which the nonconform use, nonconforming uses, which may not be considered, um, by right, but are in section blah, blah, blah of the new proposal.
We can't put it in basic language for the people than. An article in the cricket should not point them to a table on it from the table.
So let's try that. Yeah. So for nonconforming uses. One and two family houses. May add additions. To their house.
Nonconforming structures.
Well, structures. Okay. Well, it's so what? That's the boat of the problem is the what that's nonconforming.
No, but you said nonconforming uses. It's not from the structure.
Lots. We'll say lots.
It can be lots or structures, actually.
I have worse structure.
Go ahead and try to get the sense out, Chris.
One or two family houses may undertake alterations. By right, as long as the alterations conform to all dimensional requirements.
Up to a hundred percent.
Up to a hundred percent. Yeah. I think that could be wordsmithed a little bit.
I think, um. All dimensional requirements. Okay.
That's it. Because now. Is one family the right word or single family?
So. I might, I'm thinking we can do bullets here. So the proposed modifications in zoning by law include. One, a table that clearly lists all zoning. Two.
Can we just allow you to?
Annually, allow annually up to 20. And then three is nonconforming uses. And then four. Stronger. Criteria. Strong. That we can read, we can do the final words this thing, but I think that stronger.
I would suggest they one, two, three, four be not about a table, but the actual thing that you're regulating.
Maybe just use bullets.
So don't, don't make the table bullet number one.
Well, I think bullets are better. Then they're not prioritizing. I think we do need to, we were wordsmithed this a little bit, but. Okay, um, and then. Uh, include one. One new use that could be. Just senior housing that could be approved by.
So.
Permit process.
Say that again.
Approved by special permit process.
Um, new use. I'm going to put comma senior housing facilities. Okay.
Um. And then the, there's the nonconforming one, which the change of use, which is a special permit. You can't do a change of use.
I'm sure Jim was pushing for six point one point nine.
No, that's, that's Tappan Street.
We know Rita, it exists. It's pretty much a divert. For made.
I'm following you, but that's what the bylaw says.
Six point one point nine.
I'm pretty sure it's six point one point nine.
Read it to us, Mary.
Well, I have the old one. Is it the new six point one?
Reveal.
Nonconforming use is the six.
I don't have a six point one point nine.
I got a new one.
Maybe it's not six point one point nine. Maybe that's.
Are you saying the ZBA didn't know what they were doing?
We're not going to say that.
Point nine.
I've never done so that.
I may, I may be the wrong number, six point one, something.
Be non, get ready.
But it's not six point one point nine.
Six point one point two.
Right there.
You're going to read it or am I?
You can read it, Chris. I'll read along.
A nonconforming structure or use may be changed, extended. Or altered, provided that in each case, the Board of Appeals grants a special permit. Therefore, after finding a such change, extension, alteration is not substantially more detrimental. Or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. Now here's the second sentence. The above requirement does not apply to such an extension, alteration, or reconstruction, or structural change. To a single family or two family residential structure. That does not increase the nonconforming nature of that structure. And that's why it's vague and that's why we're adding all these. Rules to allow it to happen.
But the first part of that is pretty much identical to the proposed.
That's not Tappan Street. Tappan Street was proposing six units. So this extension or this exclusion is to a single or two family, which they were not proposing.
That's correct. That doesn't.
I mean, the conversation was, we have it, which the answer is don't.
Yeah, actually we do.
You can change the use from something to a single or two family.
A nonconforming structure or use may be changed.
Yeah.
Provided that in each case, the word appeals. So Tappan Street was some warehouses that were the uses being changed to residential. So it was allowed by special. You need to use.
The point being, we have, it's the same language in the new one as that language, which is relevant to this article. So we're not changing that piece. But we are doing as we, as we just described. Nonconforming lots and structures and one and two family houses may undertake alterations by right as long as the proposed alterations conform to all dimensional requirements. Up to a hundred percent increase in the special building area. Which that if they don't do that or whatever, it's special permit.
These are special pervert or variants.
Right. If. Not. If those criteria are not met.
You're missing a special.
A special. Permit or variance may be required. All right. I think those are good and forthright.
So just a clarification, are you saying that putting in the language, changing from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use? Is clarifying the language and not changing it? That's changing it.
Changing what? I don't understand the question.
So we say here, you know, a nonconforming structure or use may change center, but we don't say that you can change from one nonconforming use to another.
You can. Yes. As long as that new use is less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Under the current bylaw.
So for example, if you have an art gallery, which in a residential area. And you want to change it to a gas station. That's a more detrimental use. And so you won't get that approved.
But.
If you have a gas station, you want to change it to an art gallery. Then you could get a special permit now with order appeals might not grant it, but you could apply for it.
Subjective, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I think that this strengthens this article. I'm happy to wordsmith it.
So under special permits, or it's just a typo that says. The second set. Second sentence, this is.
And Barry and, um, of course you also have to oppose that. It's what I. I have the substantive.
How does it intervariance for a building proposal that violates zoning law? To me violate isn't the correct word. I don't think it can violate something if it isn't actually there yet. So I maybe don't comply with zoning requirements.
But one, the first sentence under variance.
Building projects that are not allowed.
I have four buildings. It is proposals that violate zoning law. I don't think a proposal could violate it. I think it needs to say proposals that do not comply with zoning requirements.
Looking for the word violate out.
Yeah.
That may have been in the changes. So I've gone back to the original. I don't see the word violate.
Yeah, that was.
No, no.
For building projects that are not allowed.
Or that do not comply.
Are not allowed. That is. No.
Are we under special permits here?
Is under variance for building projects that.
I have for building proposal. I have one for building proposal, she said violate a zoning law.
It's isn't it that they don't comply with zoning?
It's about a proposal. That by, that would violate a zoning law, so variance is required. That's more succinct.
They could say proposals that wouldn't violate a zoning law.
That would violate a zoning law, variance is required from the ZBA. That actually might be required from the planning board, depending on the proposal, but. You could say the zoning board of appeals or the planning.
My point is, I don't think you can violate something if it's not existent.
That you not, that, that would not comply.
No, it's about a proposal, you can make a proposal that would require a variance.
I was zoning, just.
For proposed buildings that do not, that would not comply with zoning, the only alternative variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Buildings and uses.
It's, it's projects and use of strength. Projects. Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Laura.
Could you go to by right? So by right doesn't apply, by right allows property owner to obtain.
So. Allow.
By right allows a property owner to obtain. Change can to.
Okay, I'm looking at the printed one, which is different, so stop there for a moment. Can I get a motion to submit cricket article number four and authorize? Be to do a final.
So.
Seven.
Any other discussion?
I guess. That substance to me is a little weak, and I'm having the originals on, right? Without having to go through any kind of public review or approval process, and honestly, you're. You don't have any recourse. You don't have any, any kind of appeal. I think that's.
That's exactly right.
So I think we need to tell them that.
You're gonna appeal a building, you could.
Yeah, he has administrative review.
The building permits. Isn't the, isn't the same thing as a special permit appeal?
No, but it is an administrative, but there is an appeal.
No. Somebody gives the city grants a. Building project.
Two different permits, you don't have. A building permit saying, yes, the, what you're proposing here can be structurally built, and it's safe and sound. It meets building code. The, where there is on your lot is different. Two different appeals.
But the, this is saying that by right, if I want, if I have a. If I want to do a building permit in my home to make a new kitchen. Or if I want to put in. That I, I have the ability to go get a building permit. And do it. And the neighbors don't get to say anything. Normally, if I comply with all zoning requirements. I can put on a dormer or build a barn or. Whatever. And I can go get a building permit, it's my by right to go get the building permit. And my neighbors don't get to say whether they like how it looks or not.
What is different in this by law is that an aggrieved party no longer has standing to. Rest.
With what?
The by right bylaws.
Where, where is my change? What's, what is the change or does that?
So if you're changing accessory dwelling units from currently needing a special permit to allowing by right, that's taking out the. Special permit process, which means you don't have a butter notification, you don't have neighborhood. Input, and then if, if a party is aggrieved, you do not have. An appeal process that you can go to courts, land courts. Or. To. You know, argue your case if you feel so aggrieved. So there, you remove, that, this is removing that process. It's just a simple. Stating the facts.
It is for that particular use, yes.
Okay, so.
Same with the non-conforming one that we just did. Good to be clear that what by right means is it means.
I thought this, so what, what needs to be changed about the.
I think Christine was just saying that. You know, it's saying that you don't get a butters notice, you don't get this, and it's just adding, you don't have an appeal process.
So do we know notification to other or. To public notice requirements, we don't need all the, I mean, it's. It's kind of redundant.
Exactly, notification to butters. And.
Or, or appeal in land court. There's, there's, without having to go through any kind of review or approval process, for a public. Public review, review. And without any. Note. Peel to land court. I mean, that's fine, that's fact, it's, if you comply with zoning, that's.
Like that, so.
This sentence, because I think it's. And without, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
So just to clarify, any decision of the building inspector. For, for a building permit is appealable to the zoning board of appeals. And if you're. It is, it is a different process, but it is appealable, so it's not. It's not accurate to say that a by right use is not appealable, it is appealable. It is a different process, for sure.
So. I'm not sure if that, wordsmith by right allows property, a property owner to obtain a building permit to construct or alter a building. Without having to go through any kind of public review or approval process, and without appeal to land court. And such permits can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Yes.
So the second part of that paragraph.
Yes.
Context is that construction or renovation of single-family homes. Are currently arrived by right, and. This is sort of the basis of how. Home building happens, right? In a single-family district town.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, any other comments? Sure, save us. We'll call, I guess.
Yes.
Yes, Greg, Gary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Uh, yes, thank you, seven, nothing. Okay, and then we have a second one. That.
I would rather not see particles published than to try to wordsmith here as a group.
I think we're so close. Second one is very close, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we do do that, because. And we all have all looked at it, and we, I think we're better for. And this is the practice we've been doing with the other. Four articles that have gone in the cricket, so let's not stop. Start to create a new process.
Another thing we talked about is the table, we're gonna put that simplified table in.
Yeah, we've already voted that, and Chris is working to getting sure that Erica can, he asked, he asked her, he hasn't heard back for sure. So we have the table.
Not the use table, the.
The matrix, that we had in the open house.
Yes.
We're talking about both now, the use table and the other.
No, the use table's not going anywhere.
Just the matrix.
Matrix. Yeah, no, sorry. So we have three week, three crickets, we just approved cricket four. We have the use, the matrix, the matrix, and then we have cricket five. Because we don't have any other meetings. We have another, we don't have any other meetings.
Talked about that, but go ahead.
But scheduled, so if we can get these done. Then we can. Be done. So, comments on proposed cricket number five. Which I have now. I don't have that on the screen, because you stopped sharing, and then reshare again.
Is that the one that says the proposed zoning changes, one, two, three, four, five?
This is it right here. So this would be the last one before town meeting.
It's just a summary.
Here's the summary.
I have some.
Okay. And we can take the language from the prior one, actually.
Well, okay. So number two. It said strengthen abroad a number of types of oversight by moving some, several provisions to the general bylaws where then have.
Where they have.
Where they.
Clarify performance based stance. Yeah, I think we guess.
Yes.
I was gonna, okay, modification in that sense, but I don't want to. Go ahead, Mary, I, I'll come back to.
Oh, yeah, are you talking about number three?
No, I was talking about number two.
Yeah, you can go.
Okay, number two, clarify performance based requirements for the site plan review of special permits. Think that will help people understand. If there should be an and, that's the incomplete sentence for a site.
Because the performance based requirements that we've changed are specifically.
Specifically the site, site line review.
Can I, I can put an and there?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I don't have track changes on.
Okay.
Okay.
So I. I guess, so this falls under the category, category, the proposed zoning changes, and then at number three, it says provide for very small new housing accommodations such as in-law apartments that are within existing single-family homes. Blah, blah, blah. I mean, we already have that, what, what we're proposing is to change it from. Special permit to by right.
Okay.
So I think we have to be clear what we're proposing.
So I would add at the end, only if they need new specific criteria that we clarify. Because that's what the law is about. New specific criteria. And I would suggest clarify number four, expanding it slightly. Okay.
Remember bear for.
So I'm still.
That needs a word smithing as well, but maybe I'm gonna ask Laura words on this one. She's good at that. But anyway, okay, opportunity for senior housing within Manchester with neighbor input and rigorous overview through the special permit process, guys.
So to be consistent, allow the opportunity for senior housing facilities. In Manchester.
I have some words for that sentence, too. For that section. With, with neighborhood input. Specific deed restriction requirements. And special permission, special permit review.
So.
With neighborhood input, comma. Specific deed restriction requirements.
What's that?
In a nursing home, doesn't it?
It would have to be, now that we have that in a special, in a senior housing.
They have to be over fifty, and that has to be done in a.
Nursing home doesn't need to be over fifty. Assisted living facilities don't have.
Do we have dairy restrictions in our proposed bylaw?
No.
No. No.
But it's the only way you can get age.
That would be a criteria of the special permit, not. It's not in the bylaw.
And special permission, special primary.
Rigorous review by special permit, so okay.
This was geared towards the page.
Okay, I think Mary had some more, let's, let's let her finish.
No, it's fine if it's on that same, so. Are we done with four?
I think so.
With five, I would just take out. The last part we're saying, without a time-consuming special permit that is currently routinely granted. I don't think our current. Special permit process is time-consuming for the ZBA, so.
Very much is.
But it's, it's an opinion, it's an opinion that we're trying to stay away from opinions, right?
Well, no, I mean, it takes months, we know that, history.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it takes some months just to advertise it.
Allow changes to existing, have to comply with something.
It takes months.
Can I, can I say we're allowing some changes, because it's not all changes, it's certain circumstances.
Sure.
Yeah.
Some changes in some instances. Because we, we elist certain criteria. Changes to existings.
Allow certain changes.
Allow certain changes. That's where I started.
So this.
We're about the time to see any special permit.
Why is it taken out?
But for, if these are warrants, strengthen and update our bylaws. Making them consistent.
Wait. Given, given during.
Okay.
Change that seven PM to six thirty.
Oh, is it six thirty? Greg, is it six thirty?
Yes, it is.
I would be late. Reservation, that's. Conservation cluster requiring. Special permit. And site. I was sort of thinking we didn't have to go through the. Every single one of the changes, and just sort of give the, the highlights.
I think there's four. I think we should do residential conservation cluster, there's only four.
To change. Okay. To allow, to, or to enable. Preservation special, can't even get the word out. Residential conservation clusters, RCC. With. Site plan review. Required by special permit to encourage. Encourage more environmentally responsible. Isn't allow, isn't it allow residential funds that, that meets. With, with, I think we said with detail, something like with detail. Site plan review before, yeah, okay, would that meet relevant?
Don't we currently have a cluster zoning law?
Yes, we do.
And we're not really allowing this, it's not a new use.
Right, we're modifying.
Buster by law. To.
To decrease the.
To be more flexible, and with the goal of obtaining, of obtaining more open space.
Well, and current, and then allowing it in every district, which we currently don't do.
And the special permit.
Or special permit. And one special permit, site plan review.
So it's kind of the subdivision control law without, without needing frontage.
Now.
That's not an opinion.
It is.
Not true.
Because you're making a judgment there.
Well, isn't the residential conservation plus, cluster saying you don't need the frontage for, like, if you have three houses?
Frontage, it has to do with the lot sizes.
Exactly, so you don't need the frontage.
You could have the frontage, you don't have to.
But that's my point.
Not a change.
It's not a change.
That's not a change, that's, that's the same as right now, if you have five or more acres and one house lot's worth of frontage. You can propose a residential conservation plus.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
So I think that is true, but it is not a change.
Well, it's a change with the lot size of the districts.
It's a change with the lots, allowed lots size, does not, it, it's just we're taking away the middle of lot size, that's the only change we're really making.
And adding all the districts.
Not the lot size, it's acre.
Right, the minimum site.
Is where the houses are built.
Right, right, the minimum site.
Yeah.
Right, allow it in every district by special permit and reduce the. And. What is it, the minimum, what did you just say? Minimum lot. Was two acres before, five acres. Two, I think we should, to eliminate the five acre minimum requirement.
Eliminate five acres and require.
No. Eliminating the five acre requirement, that's all, because we're still, still requiring all of the other stuff.
Still has to be twice.
Yeah.
Dimensional.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion. Please. Preamble, top line. Next week's special town meeting will consider a number of zoning bylaw changes. More, more than three years period, the select board has voted to recommend all of these. To the.
We do, we entered here for some reason.
And the final sentence, I think we should give them a heads up that this may go into two evenings. I mean, that has been discussed and very likely. People don't know about it and you're not giving them a heads up, they're not going to be prepared to show up a second night.
Becky, you have a question?
Can we just finish on Christine's comment before?
I think it's on the.
Um, is it relevant to that?
It's on Christina's comment, she is correct. I, Alan was making that suggestion as well.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, can I take a motion for cricket article number five and can I ask Laura to wordsmith this one? We have a couple of weeks.
Okay. It'll be this week, I'm not a very long.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, we think we can just vote this. Okay, seven to nothing, yeah, excellent, thank you very much, that's great, we got those done, we're. Which promise the select board that we would do for. Plus the matrix. So that's, I think that's all I have.
Alright, thanks. Just on a couple of administrative things, I got an. An email today from Sue Croft, there's. Down in offering SharePoint lessons. Anyone interested in that, I can forward you the information.
Sure, depending on the window.
I'll send it to you, Gary. Learning about SharePoint?
Yes, Gary. Need to know. Yeah, can you share?
Everybody.
And then there was also the. Other seminar training, I wanted to ask about that, yeah. It's on the tenth, right, already, Ron, I don't, there's a bunch of things floating around.
Okay. Just on a couple of other administrative things. The approval of the minutes, the ten, three minutes was more of a workshop minutes, the three of us, so I think. If we want, I, that we approve. And the three of us can vote.
All in favor, yes. Thank you.
The other thing, I, I think we should schedule and not maybe have one, but for November seventh and then at five thirty and before the town meeting, just schedule those meetings. In case there's an emergency, we have them posted, so my suggestion is to have one on the seventh. And then on the, before town meeting at five thirty, is anybody object to that?
So can you say that, so meeting on the seventh?
Just, just schedule it and then we can cancel unless some, if something comes up. There would be, and I would suggest that that one starts at five thirty ahead of the select board meeting. On that day.
But we hope to, we anticipate. Yeah.
If it's something comes up, you know, something crazy.
Yep.
We're, we're on board, so.
Can we put these in SharePoint?
I will. Put them on the agenda and I'll, I'll, I'll write them up to, I'll send you an email, everyone on these proposed dates, how's that?
We have the SharePoint calendar, right?
Not great at it, but I'll.
I was gonna say, I mean, we could all help, but it'd be nice to rely on it if it was.
Yeah.
Where are you putting them on the agenda, that's helpful.
Try to get them on the agenda, so.
Can I commit to November seventh, I can't certainly be available for that meeting.
Alright, SharePoint, everyone, and. I think that's all I had, just a reminder that we've now scheduled the public, the sidewalk. Bo Ryan. Laura.
You had sent around an email about a few different trainings, one of them is on different topics that apply to the planning board and. ZDA. Some of them are already gone by. Certain wonder of interest, I certainly can't make all of them and I wondered if there was interest in people kind of signing up to take one. That might be a topic they're interested in and then we're at least increasing the board's technical knowledge on some of these issues. And I can volunteer to take the site plan review. Which is the same day of jury duty, so assuming I can get hold of time from jury duty, I would take it. It's in December sixth.
I'll revisit that and offer my, see if there's something I.
There were, there was. There were like five or six different topics, they were all pretty relevant, I mean, there were zoning changes which were already mostly slugged through, there's also a modest cost to this, so I don't know if the town can.
Uh, yeah, I think it's fifteen dollars or something.
It's like twenty-five or thirty.
Yeah, Sue, last time I did one, I didn't reimburse, but you can go to, I think Sue has a budget for it, or I guess to Gail now, we can do it, it's from admin funds, we can get reimbursed.
Get reimbursed, okay. Um, I don't have it memorized, but you had it on that email tonight, I think you just went around tonight and maybe if people wanna take a look at which.
Okay.
Might be relevant, that would be a nice way to.
Yeah, why don't we do that, if you pick one, then we'll send, send it around to everyone that, you know, I'm taking this one.
It just sparked my memory and my previous conversation of the planning board budget. Can we put that on the next agenda? Can we recreate that now that? There is no one person in charge of a planning department budget. Perhaps we should.
I have to get what's, you mean, want me to get, probably from Greg as to what's.
We used to have a budget and then we had the budget, I think there were some accounting issues.
It'll be at the town.
I'll just make sure that it lines with Craig and what that process is.
And Laura, go ahead.
I was gonna say also the planning board webpage needs to be updated for contacts. That's a good point, maybe all the emails need to go. Thank you. Or you, or you, Ron.
Okay, so it still says so. A lot of, there's a lot of changes in that website, Susan's name is in there a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a research in place. I'll talk to Tiffany. Yeah, the admin stuff. Or any other items before we. Take off over.
Well, I, I guess we are done with the articles, but I. What I had mentioned before about the affordable housing piece, how are we getting that message out to people that this is not about affordable housing?
Not sure we can, how do you find what's going to individually write an article? If you'd like, I could take a shot and send it to you, Mary, and you can.
Yeah, if we just do it individually, we don't have to get the. Thing aboard, okay.
Well, why don't we take it through the same process that all the other articles have come through?
We're not gonna meet again before.
Well, we do have a half hour before the public, so we're meeting at six thirty at the public here, for the public hearing, but we do have a half hour of stuff we can do before it starts at seven, so.
So even Thursday, if, could you get something by Thursday? This Thursday? Yes, Mary, this Thursday, are we meeting this Thursday?
No, we're not, that's just the sidewalk.
Well, we can post it to talk about it. Oh. Oh, I see.
We're on, well, we'll have a, I don't know, we'll have time because that boat ride.
Oh, we may not be able to.
Sidewalkers, the DPW has an open house, I don't know what that means, but they have to be.
When is the next meeting?
Our next meeting is special is November fourth, November ninth.
We.
We have a half hour before that public hearing.
Posting for the seventh, if we needed it, we just suggested that, I put it on the calendar while you were.
So if it's small stuff, we can do stuff before the ninth, before the, before the town, before the public.
We won't be able to.
Be enough time, you're right, so.
Suggest, can I just? Challenge the notion, we have been affirmative. And here are the changes and we just strengthened our two articles to say we're doing these things. So I, I think, you know, there are a lot of things we're not doing. I mean, we're not regulating house color, we're not changing the historic district, we're not changing districts. I mean, I think that one of the thing, we're not, we're not making districts, you know. We're not changing the residential districts in any way, except for those specific ways that we just discussed. Uh, we're not changing the limited commercial, you know, a whole bunch of things we're not doing. And some of the things that we're not doing are things that. Various people have asked, we've got a list of the, you know, April town meeting, something changes. We didn't get rid of inclusionary zoning, it turns out, I just realized today, I mean, so to, to single out. No, we forgot to do that. So. Anyway, I don't believe we did, I checked today. So. So, anyway, there are a whole bunch of things we're not doing, so to call out. Uh, I think the affordable housing is a, an important issue, a lot of people are focused on. But to say. I, I think it's a, it's a complicated.
Well, it's talking about what we're doing in the negative.
Right, and we're doing so, a whole bunch of things for the diversity of housing, we're doing a few small things, actually, for the diversity of housing question.
Yeah.
And so.
Senior affordable housing and residential conservation.
Anyway.
I, I don't.
So I just think that to.
I'm.
That we're.
I'm not pulling one issue, I'm just saying, you know, I've had at least seven people mention that to me, so at least I'm. No, nobody's meant, mentioned house colors, that's why I didn't bring that up. So.
I was trying to make it extreme.
So. But I'm happy about something on my own, but, but. I just looked up inclusionary housing nine point four and there is no nine point four. So. The version you want. The link.
How was it?
Oh, it's nine.
I don't know, I'll have to go back and look at the warrant.
So it's in the.
It's, it's number. It's number nine point three. Can I make a suggestion on the affordable housing? And I know we just. Find out on the article, where we said, the, we just added a clause about conservation clusters, which is, I think, the only place we actively do something about affordable housing right now. You could add a sentence to that that says. And the residential conservation clause allows, you know, allows the density bonus or however we wanna word it for affordable housing. Currently, this is the only place in the proposed regulations where affordable, capital A, affordable housing to the threat.
Well, not if we have the inclusionary housing bylaw. Then we're covered everything.
No. Inclusionary zoning.
It was the whole section.
No, we never got, we never put that in. You're gonna always like. No, nine point three was never officially renumbered. Came up because we're doing nine point three as a.
Now we're gonna have two, two nine point three.
No, we're gonna, Greg and I talked about this today, I, I think it's a typo in that version. Because we never deleted it and we never renumbered it, I went back through the warrants today. So, someone, someone was fixing that one and made a change to change it from nine point four. The correct thing is nine point three blank. That's why senior housing is nine point three. But Greg was baking, checking and saying, why don't we, why shouldn't senior housing be nine point four, and I said.
We have confirmation that all this bylaw changes have gone out to the other towns that.
Yes, we confirmed that a long time ago. Yes.
Do we have copies of it?
We have the, I have, I have confirmation from Sharon, and with this, and I've gone through with Greg. The form seven. Nope, great, Sharon sent them. Sharon, George sent them and I have emailed confirmation that she sent them all, I sent them to this, I sent them back and I've got, talked to Greg and he and I went through the form that goes to. The Attorney General and we went through every single line and confirmed that we are in compliance.
When did they send them?
Before the public hearing. That's the requirement is before the public hearing.
And what's the story on this, do we, are we doing anything with this?
You mean like six months ago?
Under six months ago. Maybe seventeen.
Yes.
That is the requirement on the form, me and I went through every line of form seven. I sat with him in person. I didn't wanna get to the end and say.
Actually reviewed that though.
No, I don't think we reviewed it, so.
So it shouldn't be on the website, but can we, can I, I'm sorry, Laura, can I just finish this? Is inclusionary housing gonna stay in our bylaws or not?
I believe that it, that we are doing nothing about it at this town.
So what is senior housing gonna be if it's not nine point three, what's?
It is my opinion that one of two things happened, we either. Deleted it, but I don't think we did, it should, it's more, it should, that's a typo, it should be nine point four. If I'm wrong about that, there'll be two nine point threes. But if you replace, we have two sections that have the same number. And if my, my quick read on the warrant from. Last November that we did not renumber it, so it should have been remained nine point four.
Greg, you have a.
Nine point three blank is what it should be.
Red, yellow, cloud, attention.
Yeah, well, Sarah just said it, so, so currently, nine point three is blank. And nine point four is inclusionary zoning.
Right.
It was incorrectly labeled as nine point three and half of the bylaw that was retyped.
Right.
But, but it shows it as nine point four in an earlier section of that same bylaw, so it's a typo in numbering. But currently, the correct version is that nine point three is blank, nine point four is inclusionary zoning. And you're proposing a new nine point three, which is senior housing.
Correct. And we have not touched, we have not addressed the inclusionary zoning problem. We intended to, but. We got busy doing other things.
So, Greg, are you saying the current bylaw, I mean, it's not blank, obviously, so are you saying that this is gonna be renumbered?
The inclusionary zoning will be renumbered as nine point four, which is what the amendment was. When inclusionary zoning, when, when the renumbering was, was effectuated.
And we struck nine point three. Whatever that was. I don't know what's really. Quickly. Afternoon, but I think that's the case. So. So the point, so I think Laura makes a good point to include. A. In that cricket article number four to say that residential conservation cluster adds a. A incentive for affordable housing, comma, this is the only change that we're proposing that specifically addresses big A affordable. That's, I think that's a good suggestion. So do we need to?
Is that part, is this the one I've worked, I think it's.
Is everybody in agreement on that addition?
Yeah, so I mean, if that's six units or more. Is what we currently. Is what we currently have.
I think the point of that article is an overview, so it's a it's a it's a. It shows that there's that we're doing something, but not.
Not very much.
Not right, not very much.
I get and. I was gonna say, I don't want to beat it, but but we already have that, so it's not a change.
We didn't have that. Uh, you could pay. It is a change. You could pay.
Yeah.
Which we're.
We still have in this inclusionary house.
No, we don't. We don't have that. You can pay.
Can Lou.
It says shall require. Shall's a big word.
I think what she's saying is, but the inclusionary zoning.
Still in.
9.4 does allow that.
Right, yes, but that's but the resident conservation cluster. In the residential conservation. We took out the ability to pay. In the, it's currently in the residential conservation cluster. We took that out. And that is the only proposed zoning change that explicitly addresses a capital A affordable housing.
I would have to read it, but so. Which is the higher tier, the inclusionary zoning bylaw or the?
At this point then.
Which one, which one? Do you? Crawl under the desk. So which one is?
I have to read them.
You know.
They're intended to take out the inclusionary zoning. I think there was agreement that we, for this moment.
But I think we're in a bit of a pickle because of what we're not. Somebody could come in and say, well, I want to pay as opposed to be.
Special permit, we're not gonna lie to you.
Well, but they'll say you, but 9.3 lets me, so I'm applying on.
Doesn't require us to.
So I think what we need, it's an oversight for this group that we didn't take it out. But we have it on the list for next time, number one, along with typical ethical clearing, land clearing. Okay.
Alright, so no one will be surprised if Barry decided to write an article between now and town meeting. I mean, I'm just. Don't be surprised. Yeah, I mean, we all have that, right? I'm just saying. Doesn't sound like Mary was speaking for you, but just, so we're all on the same page if we're not meeting again.
Right, I mean, is it a, is it a? Mary, you're a good writer and you're very clear. Are we, is our process that this is a letter from a planning board member or is this an article?
Alright, Gail. Can we get an email out to the applicants and that the site visits have been scheduled for Thursday? Including Bayern and St. Pierre and Manchester Marine and. Everybody's parking lot and or you want me to do that tonight?
Thanks, Ron.
Oh, Bobrowski, did we want to have him at town meeting?
We did not talk about it. It's I'll I'll make a motion that.
I was just gonna say, it's kind of embarrassing that I just paid all this money and then.
My feeling is that he has demonstrated the last time he came to us that he didn't, hadn't read the bylaws. We had tweaked, I think he has a lot of knowledge about the substance of it, but I think.
What about town council instead?
Yes, I think town council is.
Well, they'll be there, I think.
I would rather have, I mean, town council will be there, but I would like to have.
I mean, what else?
I don't think he knows Manchester. Uh, he hasn't been to a meeting in since May.
That's true. There's some case law things that may come up.
I think that we.
Yeah.
Council can weigh in on this. I mean, as far as precedent and what other, you know, whether this is in the context of other towns, I think it's helpful to have him there. Have we asked him?
No, we haven't. That's the thing.
Asking.
We need to ask him, we need to see if it's scheduled.
Aside from his schedule, I think we need to ask him with time for him to review what is written. So we don't put him on the spot without knowledge. Because we have made changes. It would be helpful to have him if he has time to review.
It's a part of his contract, I believe, that's what I understand. While he's on an hourly now, we do have some money left.
I, yeah, so he's out of that contract. It's hourly. My vote would be that we don't. Waste more town funds on having him get up to speed on something he has not been a part of.
Greg, you have a comment?
Um, yeah, so so Mr. Bobrowski is prepared to attend. Town Town Council will either need to send another specialist as a zoning specialist, or we could have Bobrowski. Town Council recommends that Mr. Bobrowski, as he is the preeminent zoning lawyer in the state of Massachusetts. So they would recommend and prefer to have Mr. Bobrowski, though if your preference is to have someone else, they will send someone else. The dollars, dollars will be the same. We're paying either for a specialist from KP, the zoning specialist from KP. In addition to regular town council or we're paying for regular town council and Mr. Bobrowski.
We keep asking KP Law for the last four months of opinions. Mr. Bobrowski has not been involved, so.
Obviously, our town council fails to give us good direction or clear direction time and time and time again. Mark Bobrowski is, in my opinion, I've known him for decades. He is preeminent scholar, one of the preeminent scholars of zoning laws, and I I I would move that we. Have ask him to come and attend a town meeting. Maybe we could ask preliminarily, you could find out how many hours he might charge to come up to speed with our bylaws.
He already has. He reviewed the last version you had. He is up to speed on what you have proposed.
There you go.
Yeah, I think it would be a benefit.
So can I make a motion that we ask him to come without further discussion?
Is the motion they ask Bobrowski to come to town meeting? Do you have a second? Was it a maiden second in any discussion? Roll call vote.
Yeah.
No.
No, no.
Greg, will you follow up with Bobrowski or should I?
I can do that, Ron.
Okay.
Given that, given that, I'd like to suggest that Chris and I have a phone conversation with Mr. Bobrowski to tell him. What we've changed from his. Like.
Yeah.
And he should get this pack.
Yeah, don't tell him to go on.
I think also Alan should have a conversation with him about what the expectation are of Manchester's town meeting.
Good points. Why don't I move that Sarah and Chris have a pre-call with Bobrowski and include Alan Wilson. Your second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
You listen, Greg, has an issue with it.
Is there room for discussion?
That's fine.
Sorry.
Um, I think that that type of thing should happen at a planning board meeting where all members can be part of that. That should have been part of the. The schedule and the process. I I I don't think it's appropriate. We're going into town meeting. This has been a several year process and this is just gonna happen at the last minute again. I think this should be an open meeting conversation with all of us here. Why aren't we all on the same page if we don't have another meeting? Why aren't, is it, why isn't the entire planning board on the same page?
Been on the same page for a while.
No.
Well, I would say that I don't see any problem with too many discussing something with him about the substance that's written, printed and completely voted on by the planning board. There's nothing else to discuss. There's nothing nefarious that could happen. We're talking about facts.
We're not gonna be changing anything.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody talked to nefarious. We're, I'm clearly stating that that is a process that should get all of the planning board members up to speed for town meeting. And into engage with Bobrowski or whatever attorney on on a a level playing field that we can all share our thoughts and ideas.
So we should have done that with town council then.
We should have done it with somebody.
With anyone, so.
Isn't this? He's there in a kind of resource capacity if questions come up.
Right.
I think. Yeah, I mean, I think we're. Makes sense to have a lawyer there. He wrote the original draft. We have since made changes as a planning board. He should receive the final copy of the warrants now as soon as possible, so he has time to review it.
Charity House.
He's got this. So thank you, Greg. He's got the materials. He is more familiar with it than KPM, you know, zoning lawyers who are not working on the case. So I think simply having a logistical conversation with the moderator there is fine.
So we have a motion.
Alright, I'll take a vote on the motion to have Sarah and Chris and 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 maybe Wilson to have a discussion with Bobrowski on the process. For the certification at special town meeting. Roll call.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No, no.
I guess, you know. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Do a lot of vote.